We're on. Okay, so let's call to order a public safety meeting. Today is May 13th. Alright, so you have the minutes from last week which you mailed around?
I have the minutes from last week which I mailed around. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July 29th meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved.
Okay. Well, that's last week's but this week's is very, very similar. I figured I had one shot over there. I was like, I'm gonna print this out, more important than this. So, public safety time. Nothing. No one here. Moving on. Okay, Highland Avenue and North Hampton Street, stoplight and intersection concerns.
I think what happened at the end of the last meeting is we talked about what, like, maybe asking them to put that arm out and the letter was sent, Chris, you can read here. You sent a copy and you were working with Joe and sent him a, like, a draft.
Yeah, Joe sent me the letter, so that's what I wanted to go and print out, so I figured we could take a look at it and then get it sent off this week.
That's fine, okay.
Was there any new, there's no new information?
Just as long as that's the copy that says possibly putting an arm.
Right, and that's one of the things actually I had a concern about is I don't know if we should actually suggest what the solutions are on this since we're asking for their input on it, so I thought it'd be good if we could go together and just edit this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, I know some say you shouldn't tell, but I think if you don't give this, I think the, what I heard, I could be wrong, is if you just ask them to do it, they're gonna think that they want us, what we're looking for is the whole intersection to be redesigned, which in some ways is a military battle. So I think certainly they don't have to follow our suggestion. I think all we're putting that in is, is as a suggestion that would show all you would have to do is not redesign the whole intersection, you just have to change one piece of equipment.
Right. Okay, so the first paragraph is, "We recently received a complaint concerning the intersection of Highland Avenue and North Hampton Street, which is also known as Mass State Route 10. I've included a copy of the communication from the East Hampton PD, which clearly states the safety issue with the intersection." I think we're all okay with that. "As this intersection involves a state road, it would be helpful if you would advise me improvements." What improvements, if any, can be made to the intersection to increase the safety?
Which is, that's just asking.
Yeah, that seems fine. "It appears that the light signal for the traffic moving south on North Hampton Street needs to be adjusted, so it is out of view of cars as they turn south off Highland Avenue." I don't know if adjusted is the right word. I think this is where we wanna say that it needs to get looked at because of where it is. Although Highland Avenue, I can start a sentence with a preposition. Oh, okay. "Although Highland Avenue traffic has a green light upon turning south, there can be with the red light for the traffic itself on North Hampton Street, and those existing Highland Avenue often come to complete stop right in the middle of the intersection with a potential for collisions." Just grammatically, I think that just needs to be cleaned up.
Can you start a sentence with a preposition? Is it a preposition?
It's kind of like a sentence fragment. It just says, "Although Highland Avenue traffic has green light, the potential for collisions. The traffic off of Highland Avenue is not just residential traffic." "There's a small strip of stores that house lingerie, restaurants, etc. People who come from the area are courteous. Look forward to your advice and recommendations as to how best to accomplish this, such as adjusting later updating the inter-signal on puts the light out of view of Highland Avenue traffic." Out of view?
Yeah.
So that when they...
So in other words, out of view is when they turn, they don't see it?
So that when they turn, they don't see it, yeah. That's a little clunky. I think we all agree that the explanation of what needs to be done, yeah, that there's basically, there's an angle that's wrong, you know, and they're getting conflicting messages when they're taking that left.
I think if they take that, that's all they need to do.
Yeah, they're just getting conflicting messages. They're getting a go and then they're getting a stop, so... So it's perceived conflicting traffic signals because they're not actually conflicting. So we'll just fix the grammar, tighten it up, and...
Okay.
Send it off?
I think Joe had more to that letter, didn't he?
This is the most recent copy. We did have more initially.
Was that the whole letter or was, did that come from the body of his letter? I know Joe said to you once, he was, can you? Sure. Jennifer cares.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's fine. No, that was it.
That's the whole letter?
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty short and sweet to the point. I just wanna make sure... And, uh, it's coming with a problem without a solution. Yeah, gotcha. Going to the, without a solution, but at the same time, I don't wanna tell them exactly what, I don't wanna make like a request.
Yeah, I don't think we're really, I think we're just saying, we're looking forward to your advice and recommendations. I think we leave it pretty open-ended. We're just throwing that one thing out that they might at least consider that. I mean, they may say, hey, that's not feasible and this is what we wanna think. I mean, I don't think we're in any way saying this is how we think it has to be fixed. I think we're just throwing that out. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I don't think they're making any specific recommendations with this. And we're always putting it in basically there. We look forward to your advice and recommendations.
Well, here's a procedural question. Do we have to, do we all have to vote on this letter before it goes out, or can I just write it and send it?
I think just basically, when I can approve, that we approve this letter being sent out, then you can just write it in this terms and send it out.
Okay, so I'll rewrite it tonight and I'll email it to you and then...
Okay, and then we'll send it out. I'm not sure we have an address. I think we have an address.
Yeah.
Joe had the whole header of the thing. That's what I meant about Joe. I knew he had headers.
Yeah, that's great.
Maybe that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the letter except with a few minor changes that you're gonna make and we'll email it out and you can write it and we'll send it out to the highway department, State Highway or Mass Highway Department. See if they'll do anything for the citizen meetings.
Let's see, let's see. Okay, and then I think, then we have the street acceptances are back.
Yeah, well, I don't know, maybe, and I was thinking later, maybe Jim Gracia doesn't know we're meeting again. Because I know Joe McCoy, and I didn't, I thought Joe might be here too.
I thought Joe might be here as well.
He kind of implied to me he didn't want to, and I think you were there too, Jennifer, that he didn't wanna go to the city solicitor and expend the money to get an opinion.
Pay the money to get an opinion on whether or not we can ask for more improvements at this point.
So I thought what we would do, and Joe, I thought, kind of agreed at least, but I wanted to bring it to the committee, because Joe was theoretically a committee member, is to ask the developer if he would voluntarily do those small things to bring it up. My only problem is, I took another ride and that's why I was hoping Jim was there. I don't know if this is gonna show you anything. This is new construction.
Right.
Did you take a ride up there?
You know, I didn't. I mean, I thought...
This is new construction that I don't know when, when the developer did this. I wanted to ask this because this, the back here, if you see that, that little house in the back?
Yes.
That's Fox Run. Okay, which is almost a very expensive home. This just comes to an end. It falls off like five or six feet. And all the water, there's no drainage, and all the water comes, it looks like it's angled down there that goes right over the bank. And I don't know if, I believe that has been changed recently, and I don't know if Mr. Gracia has seen that change or not. And I, I don't feel until we get an answer on that too. Maybe it's only partially, maybe it's something he asked the developer to do and the developer hasn't finished it. You know, in other words, he's done it, maybe he has to put more stuff in there, so I don't, I'm not jumping to conclusions that it is, that it is a problem.
And the other thing that gave me kind of a great big pause was when the attorney was here and saying that these street acceptances, when Dave Sullivan was our solicitor, that maybe they were already done. And I feel like we really need all of the documentation from the beginning and just look through it and catch up and make sure we do it correctly. Especially if we're gonna be looking at the protocols of how we do street acceptances that...
We go back and find out.
But I do feel like there's a compelling argument that we took a long time as well. I feel, you know, kind of culpable for that.
I will agree with that, but again, the developer took 15 years, so I guess a few months, you know, we're under no obligation to move at any pace.
No.
You know what I'm saying?
I agree, I agree.
I'm not saying that I would ever wanna, you know, we should always move as judiciously as we can. I mean, we had a lot of things going and I just... This was the document that Joe also had a little bit of a concern on, and I think Barbara, Barbara is one of those institutional knowledge people. And she said that she thinks this was written by actually Attorney Carey, what I believe now is Judge Carey.
Yep.
He was the solicitor just before Dave Sullivan.
Right.
And that's all we have. But Joe was saying, maybe, Joe was saying it isn't a...
This is what we have for street acceptances, which is anemic?
No, no, I definitely have some people...
To say the least. I've been reading street acceptances for the past week, you know, and taking a look at things, and actually that was one of the things I wanted to bring. Well, I don't know, we don't, this is another agenda item, so I don't know, do we wanna continue?
Oh yeah, I think we could, I think, why don't we move, because we're not gonna approve this tonight anyway. We've got a few more questions. We can move it if you want. We can go back. You don't have to just end the agenda item. Go on to the next one and prove something because of that.
Well, I think, I think it's unfortunate that we've taken a long time with this one and, but unfortunately, I feel like it has to be our, our sample that we're using to see.
Oh, absolutely.
I think one of the reasons we're, we're looking at why the street acceptances and the protocols and what we're doing is because this situation happened.
Well, no, I don't think we can, we can hold this up until we do the new protocols or this is how it came under when he applied for street acceptance. I would definitely agree with that. Again, my question is, and maybe I differ a little from Joe, and again, I wish Joe was here. I think Joe takes the attitude that once the city engineer says it's good, then it's, we like, and I don't wanna put words in Joe's, Joe's, so this speaks for himself. But I got the feeling that he felt, well, that we kind of have to approve it. If I read this, it's basically the council has to affirm it. It doesn't say that we have to abide by what, and again, I respect the city engineer. Certainly, he's the expertise.
Absolutely.
But I think we certainly have a right to ask the city engineer questions as to, you know, why is it okay if this is cracked, why, and again, I guess I have real concern in not looking at the end of that street because it looks like a real danger. If you come down there, whether night or day, it looks like it's just a straight shot over that bank. And I don't think it was like that, you know, I don't get up that way that often, but I don't think it was like that before. So maybe something he's in the middle of constructing.
Right.
And I don't wanna say that it's the...
And again, if we, if we go line by line, it says, you know, "This request must be accompanied by a proposed deed in essentially the same form as the one attached here too, and a copy of the recorded plan or plan in recordable form depicting the proposed new public way." I have not seen that.
I, we have the deed.
Yeah.
But we don't have the plan.
We don't have the plan. And I think the plan is an important part if you're taking pictures of streets that just dead end.
Absolutely. I agree. So we would like to get a copy of the plan.
Mm-hmm. And that plan should have gone to the planning board, Board of Public Works, Town Engineer, and City Solicitor requesting the D to review the proposed deed and plan and submit a written recommendation of the council regarding a quest relay of the perusion of the deed accepted.
Now, the only thing I saw from the planning board is they said they, they wrote, that they'll defer to the city engineer. I didn't see, and it, and I don't wanna say, because you've got a lot of things. I don't know if we ever got a written recommendation from the city solicitor.
We did.
We did.
Yep.
He said that, but I think he was addressing the deed, right?
Yep. "I've reviewed the proposed deed prepared by Sedonis conveying the above reference street to the city for acceptance. The deed is in proper form and description is accurate, and I therefore approve."
So he's, he's approving the form of the deed.
Right.
That's what he's, I mean, it's not approving, you know, saying, that's not, that's not his expertise.
There doesn't, I mean, I, maybe there's a plan, but I don't feel like I've seen a plan.
And then the, the stuff from Mr. Gracia.
Which stuff?
We also have to get a written recommendation and a proposed deed and plan, planning board of public works, city engineer requesting each in writing. So did Mr. Gracia actually give us, what was the list? I know the attorney gave you a list you were looking at at the meeting, but do we have that of what he was actually supposed to do?
What we have is the letter from Jim Gracia that says, "We had noted several areas in need of repair and these areas have been addressed to our satisfaction." And that's from April 14th. So we don't have the original letter.
Right, but did the attorney show you last meeting?
She did.
Where he, she had a document from Jim Gracia say outlining exactly what he expected them to do.
Yes.
And that, you know, but again, I, again, I don't see why we shouldn't have a copy of that as a follow-up.
So do you want me to ask?
I mean, I guess Jim probably sent it to me. Maybe we can see if we can get that complete letter.
So ask Jim for his mail-in repair requests.
And why I asked him repairs, or I thought, you know, and can be voluntary for builders, is Jim did admit that he wrote this, while he wrote this April 14th, he never went out after the winter, so that's a question of, was it ready to go in the fall? And that goes back, but again, I, you know, we have not accepted that street, so to me, it's what we accept. Again, I don't, you know, I know what you're... And again, if he's been done more work, I guess I'd also like to ask Jim about the end of the street, if you're writing the letters. There, there's, looks like new construction. Not sure if that's Willow or I think those two are separate.
It's...
Which one goes in? One's the short one, one's the...
Willow is the short one.
Willow's the short.
And Autumn is the longer.
So I guess it would be the eastern end.
Right. That's the other one, so that one's looming, which is why I'm like, I wanna get this, I need it out.
Are those at Kingsbury? We don't have, do we have a map of the other?
We don't. That's the whole thing. It's like, we don't have a plan. And I almost, I'm curious as to where like sewers are set up, where streetlights are set up, like where those kinds of things are set up.
And that's what I was looking like when I went down, again, I kind of, to tell you the truth, my main reason for going down, because I didn't go down to that end the other time. I just went in there quickly and I said, geez, I wonder why this wasn't, you know, those two little pictures I took.
Right, right.
And so today, I really went down there more to see if maybe they had fixed it, because it doesn't seem like it would have been a big deal to put. It was all I think we were asking for, was like to take that rubber, seal it, and seal the cracks.
Right.
And that's when I went down to the other end that goes, and again, I don't want us to approve this road. And it looks to me, and again, I'm not certainly an engineer, I like, that's why I'd like Mr. Gracia's thing, there's no storm drain for several feet before that ends, and it just goes, you come down the street, it's just, the road just goes over a little hill, like four, five foot hill. There's no guard rail, there's no, there's no sewer there. And you can see where the water is, is going off the side and heading into the backyard of one of those $500,000 homes down there.
The things that I've been reading about street acceptances and, you know, the flow charts and how they work and what should be on there, those things are addressed, where it's like, you know, are you, we need, you know, so many storm drains every so many feet. And that happens, and that's checked off on a list and where...
That's why I think it's imperative we find out from what that end is, that something's done, because I don't wanna accept that street, no matter what the, whatever Jim, you know, has said, if that's gonna drain water. I mean, I don't wanna take the city's obligation on to those new homes.
Well, I'm trying to look at like what the, the essence of what a street acceptance is and it's whether or not the street is acceptable.
Right.
And yes, our timeframe has been not the best, not the best, but the street needs to be acceptable.
And there's no statute of limitations to street acceptance.
And there, there is.
Again, it's not like this, this developer has been prompting his requests.
No. So what I'd like to do...
That's his right, but it, you know, it doesn't mean that we have to move quickly just today, and we should do our due diligence.
Yeah.
Because we're the ones accepting it from the city for all it has.
Do you know if, I mean, is, is there like a file somewhere that we can get? Like, how do they do this? Like, how do we go back to the original request?
I guess maybe you could make a request to Jess.
Would it go to City Council?
I think the planning department should have a plan. I mean, this isn't that old. This goes back to 1990. I mean, a lawyer, attorney said, she believed around 1995. She didn't say specifically. It's in the mid 90s, so it's not, I mean, it's 15 years. There should be still record. Just so we could get a copy of the plan, or maybe Jim has, Jim probably has access to one down at his shop also.
Well, I'd like to see the entire file. I'd like to see their initial, like, proposal for like, these are the street requests and what, I know. But I, I don't know, who, do you think I start with Jess on that one?
Yeah, or, you know, you could ask, I guess you could ask Jim and say, you know, we also would like the...
I'll just copy them both.
Yeah, copy them both. We're looking for like the original subdivision plans, like that show the locational, you know, whatever storm drains like.
Well, what we're looking for is the original, what they would have submitted here. I mean, if this is what they got, which it looks like from, from this, that looks like a very early, I mean, the fact that it's a .pw file.
Right.
It's like cuneiform. And a copy of the recorded plan or plan depicting the proposed new public way. So there should be a plan depicting the proposed new public way.
Because they would have created the subdivision, and they created that subdivision, they would have had to create a plan.
Exactly.
Because I mean, we did have subdivision laws back, you know, like that.
So we're looking for the original street acceptance proposal from the developer. And any other communication that happened between the two of them, because it, I mean, we don't even know why it took this long, the streets were never ever, so I think we just have to backtrack on that one. So I guess we take a motion to keep this on the agenda.
Yeah, I guess we keep it on the agenda until we get those.
We'll keep it on the agenda until we get that information.
You know, we can, we judiciously, once we get it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd like to have Joe here as well. I'd like to invite Joe.
I don't know why Joe, and we gave her, Joe, we got...
I know, she was very contrite about missing the last one. She's gone for the twofer, so...
Now, in a, is, on our agenda, we have to leave them as...
Yeah, I just, I have it electronic.
Do we have the other streets on there so we can talk about it? They're not...
We don't, no.
It doesn't mention Kingsbury or what is...
No, it doesn't mention any of those. I need to get an extension for those, actually.
Oh yeah, Kingsbury.
Oh, she first, it does, I'm sure.
So, just so, I just wanted to make sure that was on there before, because I did take a ride around there, and those are in definitely much worse condition. I mean, there, there's sections of that development where the street is cracked totally across the entire street.
And that's an older development as well, too.
Yeah, we, I would say it's maybe just a little bit older than these, but the streets are in much worse condition. There's several areas where, as I said, almost every 15 or 20 feet, you have a crack right across the whole street, some of which have already been repaired at least once with goo, and it's been opened back up. So again, I don't know what Jim's asking him to complete on those before we get there, but it might be something that...
Right.
That one sounds like it might be, and I know that was one of, he didn't have some of the drainage done on that one.
Kingsbury Lane, as Sedonis told me, that there were some technical issues that had to be worked out with Jim Gracia.
As I said, I think that would make a lot of problems.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not trying to take that one on you right now. We can get through Willow and move on to that one.
Right. So on the 10th, we were looking to take them off our agenda because of those. Alright.
I mean, I don't know if we wanna keep them on our agenda at the public hearing, though, I mean, you know, we're paying every time to republicize the public hearing, so I don't know when we'll be ready. I think we're certain we'll be ready next week. I guess we already continue the public hearing till then, so we will be going forward. Do we think we can do it? I mean, to June, I don't know if we're gonna get it by the June either, because that, we have to do the whole budget, you know, these three financings, I don't know what else is going on in June.
We have a lot going on right now. I mean, you in particular have a lot going on.
And then we don't meet again until the first week in July, so...
This is Kingsbury, Bayberry Drive.
That's a bit, a bigger complex.
It is, but I'm just making sure...
But that's kind of what you're looking for, but it may be a little more detailed map with, with some utilities like where the storm, maybe there are storm drains down there. Jim was here to explain it, but I'm not sure. But we don't have one of those for Willow that I've seen.
No, we don't. And this is the initial application, and that's what I was doing, is making sure that this second group of street acceptances is following under protocol as it stands right now. Okay, so that's street acceptances, and we just continue. We'll just set another meeting.
Try to get that information.
And we'll set another meeting.
Procedure, $100.
I know.
Do it when ready.
Should send her a Snapchat. Oh, my phone's not even off. Okay, so then the final item is looking at the protocols again.
Right. You said you've been on the internet getting...
Yeah, I've been getting copies from other cities' flow charts. I talked to Peter Davies from the assessors, and you've already talked, and I told you we were done.
I didn't talk to Peter. I was down at the assessors because I was inquiring, and the assessors seemed to think that maybe there's some taxes being paid on new roads themselves, but he really didn't give me a figure.
Right, and that, that's something we need to figure out.
And I'd like to get that, and I'd also like to get Willow, like, what, I guess it also, because I know part of our protocol's gonna run into this plowing, I'd like to see who makes, who has been in the past making the decisions which, which get plowed, which don't get plowed. Has that been coming from Joe, or has it been coming from, is it just they do ones that they wanna do? Is it the mayor, or the former mayor, it wouldn't be this mayor, but the former mayor was either one, say, of those, I don't know.
Right.
But I'd like to find out.
No, and that's one of the things I've been looking at. I've been looking at that and sometimes the developer will put a money in a bond precisely, so...
And maybe, I miss, there was a lot going on last meeting, it sounded like the latest one that we have that's right now is Paul Street. I don't know if you know where Paul Street is.
No.
If, the condos on Main Street, there's a big development of condos on Main Street. And then there's the South Street, you know, the bad intersection.
Yeah.
And that goes down to the Glendale House, okay? When you go down from South Street and Main Street, down toward the Glendale House, before you get to Glendale, there's a couple of streets, they're residential streets. If you take that left in the very back, it runs behind the back, the back of those condos, is Paul Street. And then at the end of Paul Street, it's called Paul Street Extension, they're putting in like a development of six or seven homes. And that's the latest one, which they said they were plowing. That just started about a year ago. That just came from...
And Joe was talking about that last meeting?
Yeah, somebody mentioned it last meeting as one of those that was being done, and in that case, they like took a lot. And maybe I caught it, it was a side conversation and...
Oh, wasn't that the one where it was like, it was easier for them to go down that way rather than back up? It was easier for them to turn around?
So they decided to plow it, and that, they didn't put a, they didn't put a bond, or, and again, I don't know what he did, or maybe he pledged a lot if he didn't...
Right.
But I mean, you can't have it, somebody's pledging a lot, somebody's being made a payment. That's why we gotta get a, a procedure so that it's fair for every developer.
No, and, and it's very simple, actually. A lot of the ones that I looked at are not like these long, complicated, like, you know, jump through a million hoops kind of thing. They really have streamlined it, yeah.
Which is the way it should be and get it done.
So I got a lot of good information from that.
So we'll sit down and definitely...
Do you want me to email you that?
Yeah, any of that stuff, you can email me. Just email me. Yeah, any of that stuff you can email me, just email me.
I kind of wanted for here, I like to have things in front, highlight, cross out.
But it's good to get it, and that way you can read something like that, and then the next meeting, we can put that one away too, and kind of like, hopefully work a little closer, see what Joyce feels about it. She's been around the town, she's had a lot of, now.
Well, and that's what I thought, is that if we can kind of get a skeleton going, put everything on it that we think is, could be relevant to anybody in any department in any way, shape or form, and then kind of walk that around and, you know, go to the assessor's office, say, listen, these are things that we've seen, and they could be like unnecessary, unnecessary, double under, you know, like, basically get a lot of the legwork done, and then just have the different departments edit stuff in and out that they want.
Because I think we're, at some point, we're going to have to, and this is something we might have to sit down with Joe, is when we're done, do we put this new procedure into form, or do we put it, or do we send it?
It'd be a bylaw.
I think it would be a bylaw.
I think it's a bylaw, yeah.
It is bylaw. Joe was trying to say it's kind of in the planning board now, but I mean, the planning board really, I don't think, there's certainly nothing about, I've gone through all our city things now, and other than this little document, I can't find anything in there.
That's it, man.
From many, you know, I read of subdivision things from back in the 90s in town, and there's a lot of things about streets, and that looks like the last subdivision.
There was one community I looked at, they had just a spreadsheet that was on their website that had every street, and whether it was accepted or not accepted, what the next steps were, and they just kept updating this, this spreadsheet, which I thought was a great idea.
Because I, you know, it'd be interesting to me, I mean, I've lived in this town almost 40 years, and I don't know all the, I don't know which streets are, you know, how many private streets we have. I know in my city council time, I've had a couple of people say, geez, I, you know, there's four of us on this road, and you, why aren't we getting plowed? And Joe said, well, we don't plow that road.
Right. And the other thing I want to do is make sure that we focus on the goal of the protocol, which is to make sure that we are not losing or spending money as a city.
Right.
That's the goal, you know?